... meeting to order with invocation and pledge by the Honorable Travis Reader.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Thank you for waking us up this morning. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to endure all of the pain and all of the COVID-ness and all of the things that have went through as we went through this election season. Dear Heavenly Father, continue to bless us as we continue to move on and try to do the things in this county that is necessary for the people that live here. Dear Heavenly Father, continue to bless us as we move on from day to day, hour from hour. In these blessings, we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. We've got a little better crowd than we normally have. Wish you could have this larger a crowd every night, but anyway, thank y'all for coming out. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two, ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance to the County of Newberry adopted June 20, 2016, so as to amend the zoning map acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established, codified in Chapter 153 of the County of Newberry Code of Ordinances, so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling two and five tenths acres designated as TMS parcel number 52385 from industrial to R2 industrial. This will be the first reading. Let's see, the stated purpose of the rezoning request is to change the existing zoning classification of industrial to R2 to permit the parcel owner to use the parcel for a residential purpose. The Planning, Staff, and Zoning Commission recommended adoption of this ordinance. Do we have a motion? This be the first reading. Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? Ms. Peters, you got anything on that one?
I just have a map.
Okay, could you? Okay, if you don't mind, would you please do that right quick?
So, this is the parcel here. There, which is currently industrial. This is Macedonia Church Road. This is Mount Pilgrim Church Road, and we meet about here. This used to be called the Rag Barn, this spot here for local homage. They're looking at making it R2 rule. As you can see, it's pretty much surrounded by R2 rule.
Okay.
And he's looking at, the owner of all of this is looking at making it R2 rule so he can live there, can build a house and live there.
Okay.
Next to the business.
All right, with the explanation of the location, is any question? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, item number three, an ordinance acting on the request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number 06-11-16, codified in Chapter 153 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling 52.9 acres designated as TMS parcel number 631-12, tract A, from a single-family residential to R2 single-family residential. This is the first reading. We have a motion. This be the first reading. Motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Stockman. All right?
Mr. Livingston.
RSM. Okay, single-family residential, RSM.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we might have some folks who want to speak to us.
I've got two people on here before we make a decision. Oh, excuse me, three. Typically, those people would speak. Hot dog. I'm trying to get to page two and my fingers end up with a fumble finger. Under public comments, but since they are related to one before we actually hear it, we will let those people speak. First one on there is Mike Satterfield, rezoned Jolly Street. If you come to the podium, state your name and...I think they need address too, Mike. Correct?
An address?
Name and address.
Mike Satterfield, Executive Vice President and CEO with Great Southern Homes, and the address is 90 North Royal Tower Drive, Ermo. Real brief, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I know this is out of the norm, but I just would like to take a moment to talk a little bit about Great Southern Homes, who we are, because I'm not sure if the council knows our company. Great Southern Homes is privately held regional home builder and developer. Our corporate office is in Ermo, South Carolina. We also have offices in Greenville and Myrtle Beach. We employ about 150 people, many, several live in Newberry County, including myself. We build and develop in Greenville, Spartanburg, Clemson, all throughout the Midlands, Aiken, Florence, Sumter, Charleston, Myrtle Beach. Typically, our product offerings are anything ranging from townhomes in the upstate to million-dollar homes on Lake Murray and everything in between. We drag a pretty wide net. We, as a company, over the past few years, we've received numerous awards for our efforts, including State's Best Builder three years in a row, Lexington Life Ermo's Best Builder four years in a row. We've received multiple awards through the Central South Carolina Home Builders Association, and most recently, our company owner was recognized with a Hearthstone Award given by Builder Magazine for one builder throughout the country for his charitable efforts. One of the noted projects within that award was our efforts at the Boys Farm that's located here in Newberry. We've been working with those guys for about three years, maybe four. We've erected three cottages, if you will, at the Boys Farm. I don't call them cottages because they range from 5,500 square feet to about 7,000 square feet. You know, our efforts with the Boys Farm have resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars of donations to the farm, so we've been active here in the county. We build in the county now, and we're glad to be a part of Newberry. Very quickly, and you can tell me if I need to pass on this, comments about the project?
Y'all want to hear comments?
I've got ideas.
You want to hear them, and I'll be very brief. You know, the parcel consists of 53 acres. It's located three quarters of a mile from I-26, and it's on Highway 773, and it's a mile from the industrial park, which is located on the other side, and, you know, six miles or so from Newberry and Samsung and things like that. Water is available to the parcel. Sewer is available to the parcel. Sewer capacity is available. Today, the site is 75% pasture. We will do a traffic study as part of our due diligence, and of course, all design will be approved and engineered by the local municipalities in our engineering firm. It was mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting about restricting the site against mobile homes. The answer to that is yes. If we own it, we would restrict it against mobile homes. I have no problem doing that. The proposal, as you guys know, are for somewhere between 85 and 95 lots. Those lot sizes range from 75 foot wide to 75 by 200 on average, which equates, I think, to about 1.7 houses per acre. I think it's a great spot. It's close to the interstate. It doesn't, I think, traffic impact, which we will show in a study, would be minimal with the jobs that are coming into the county and the industry that's coming here. You know, I think the county needs some roof pipes. We'd like to do the project. I think we'd fit in well. So, thank you for the time. I appreciate it. Either myself or some of the guys that I brought with me could answer any questions that you may have.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that you would do a traffic study. Is that prior to building?
That would be prior to us purchasing the property.
Prior to purchase?
Yes, if it does not pan out, then we'll move on.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And secondly, did I understand that you said 1.7 houses per acre?
Is that the math? Isn't that pretty close?
Seven, one, eight.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else, folks?
What size, yes, what size homes? You're talking about two homes per acre or just about? What kind of square footage are we talking about, and what's, what kind of dollar value and all of that?
That is part of our due diligence and our marketing efforts, you know, as we go through our due diligence. But typically, our average sales price as a company is $225,000. I think this will average somewhere in that range. You know, some of that's driven by what people option, the options that they add and that sort of stuff, but that's the product that, as a company, we're really good at. You know, Craftsman-style product. If this moves forward, I will be glad to share some of the stuff that we do in other neighborhoods throughout the Midlands or throughout the state that we feel like would fit into that, to that community.
So houses could go up to, what, from 225 based on options? As much as what?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that tonight. It could, I don't know. I wouldn't want to give you a bad number, just be giving you a number.
Okay, I understand.
So is there other location similar to what you're planning? Maybe in Ermo or Chapin?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
What would that be similar to? What would your plans be similar to?
I could give you a couple to look at, because I think it may end up being kind of a cross between the two. Here again, it's, every market's different. We want to provide a product for the buyers who, I mean, this is a little more rules, so we want to be out there, but we have a community down in Hilton, Hilton Cove is the name of that, and we also have a little community in Chapin called Long Pine Station. It's off of Hainault Ferry Road. That product's a little smaller. I feel like at the moment, here again, our due diligence will, I think, tell us what we need exactly to bring to market, but my feeling today is we end up with kind of a cross between those two that I just mentioned. That's kind of what I think.
Other question?
The community will also be governed by an HOA. It'll have homeowners association.
Any other question?
Would you, would y'all be willing to meet with the neighbors if you deem necessary?
Most certainly.
All right. Any other question? I've got people that signed up on the sheet that we will. Okay? All right. Thank you, Mr. Satterfield.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Amanda Moss, I think you're here to speak about the same topic. You would state your name and address.
My name is Amanda Moss. Address is 3153 Highway 773, Homaria. And the land's in my father's name, and he's right here, Edgar Taylor. I spoke with several of y'all today on this issue, and I'm not very good at public speaking, but I'm going to try to get through it. The traffic is the main thing in our area. The two main roads, 773 and Jolly Street Road, are most dangerous and busy roads in that area. With the school traffic and logging, or 18-wheelers that bypass the waystation on the interstate and/or, excuse me, workers going to and from Columbia or Chapin or Prosperity back and forth on those roads, the area has gotten really busy, and the road is very dangerous. We have a potential concrete plant going in on 773 that is also going to add to it. I understand that it's a short-range plan, two to three years for that concrete plant, but during those two or three years, then you're going to have about 95 homes, 80 to 95 homes, being built and lived in. And each home there is, statistics state that each home could have an equivalent of two cars per home. That's an extra 190 vehicles traveling in and out of our community daily. You have statistics indicate that there's about two kids per home, and I did look up these facts and figures today on the internet. So you're looking at 190 kids approximately going to the area's schools, which are the elementary school, Homaria, Garmoni. You also have, and that is a Prosperity location, so I'm not sure if it would actually be Prosperity Riker, but you also have Mid-Carolina Middle School and Mid-Carolina High School, which I'm understanding that the two elementary schools are pretty much at capacity, and the high school is getting close, if not there. The strain on our public resources, the police, the buses, like I've already said, the schools, and the fire and rescue. You know, you're at a county line or town line between Prosperity and Homaria. So, you know, is it with the EMS and the fire, you know, are they to share that area, or, you know, which is closer, or how that would go about? And also, you know, with that many homes, you'd probably need more equipment for those types of resources. As far as it not, it does not fit our community. We are a rural area, and we want, we don't mind some homes being built. That's not the whole deal. But cramming 95 homes is the figure I'm seeing in my head, 95 homes on 52.9 acres of land, you know, that just is a red flag for us. It's a red flag for our community. I've spoken with numerous neighbors, and they're all against it. There's probably some that are, and I'm not going to speak for them, but the ones I spoke with, I'm speaking for us. I'm also worried about what kind of effect and affect that it will have on the surrounding and adjacent lands, which, being personally, our land butts up against Cromer's land, the 52.9 acres. Bobby and Marina Williams, their land butts up to it too. And so that, those are just my concerns of the traffic pretty much is the main thing, and then what effect it's going to have on our surrounding lands and our resources in the community that is rural.
All right, Ms. Moss, any questions for Ms. Moss? Okay, Ms. Moss, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you taking the time to come out.
Thank you.
Take care, Dad. Make sure y'all get, her dad is one that runs, I say runs, the Homaria recycling station. He does that quite often, and they also probably have probably one of the biggest light displays on 773 or in the immediate area for Christmas. It's about time to get started putting that up.
Thank you so much. If anybody wants to help.
All right, Stephanie Wimberly?
My name's Kate Chandler. I'm Stephanie's mother, and it's my property. She and I own 60 acres together on Boynest Road, and I don't want her to go crazy, so I thought I would speak and say that, if that's okay. I moved from the Ermo area 20 years ago. I came to Newberry County because of what it offered. It was a flat rural town. My husband was in Bramble County, said he wanted to come back to the country. I want to support everything you've just said, and I'm not going to repeat anything you said. My concern is a little different. It's the same, but it's different. I'm on Boynest Road. If you look at the map, any runoff, anything on the backside of that piece of property that goes through that creek across Gin House is coming straight to my two ponds. It's going to come down behind Paul Sheely's property. It's going to come down, that creek comes down, it comes down to my property, which my house is way off the road. It's going to run into Tony Higbee, and then it's going to hit Cannon's Creek. I'm worried about what the construction with that many homes in that small of an area is going to do. We are a tight community. I know we need homes, but there are other properties, and I'm more than willing to help you make the connection on 773, on the other side of the interstate. We don't have any housing developments over there. They're all family. They're land. I bought the last 60 acres of the Boynest property that belonged to George Eichelberg that was given by the grant, land grant of the King of England, and we've all kept all our land in the family. That's why my daughter's building on the property. I really, really want you to consider what you're doing. I'm worried about the roads. We just had Jolly Street resurfaced. Boynest Road was torn to pieces when the bridge over Cannon's Creek flooded several years ago, and it still isn't very good, even what they did with it, where they just patched it. I can only imagine with the extra cars, with the construction, with the 18-wheelers in and out. I watched what happened in New Friars Gate. Granted, it's not Southern Homes, not through personal. It was a Michael Mungo. I watched what happened in Shaladon across from White Hall, because we lived in White Hall, and 10 years later, those places were not what they were originally built, and they have turned, I don't think it's what we want in the community. And I'm just, I'm concerned, and I'm trying not to get emotional, so I apologize. I really wish there was a way to reconsider this. I wish there was a way, before this moved forward, that we could get more answers from Southern Homes. I was, I want to know what their plan is. I want to know, is it, it's a subdivision and it's an HOA? Is there going to be a pull? Are they going to have friends over, more people in? Or the tree's going to stay up to separate it from the road? Or is it just going to be out there in front of all of us that we have to drive by every day? What's the crime rate going to be? I really wish we could have some of those answers before you, you, you all, I didn't want to say councilmen, apology, and before y'all really start going on this. It seems like this is getting pushed through so fast. I didn't even know about it until three days ago, so I don't know how we were supposed to find out about it. So, anyway, thank you for your time. I wish you'd just consider everything that we both said.
All right, any questions or comments in regard to that?
I would like to see, I guess, a meeting be scheduled between the landowners and the company. I would rather have that done before we actually start making any type of decisions.
Amen. We, and just for information, we would probably welcome that opportunity. Now, some of the questions that you're asking, the crystal ball, I don't know that will be clear on that, because when you go to talk about crime rate, nobody knows what crime rate's going to be. Nobody has a clue what crime rate's going to be with or without. I mean, it's just, it's just one of those things. One of the things that both of you made comments on was the traffic study, I mean, traffic problems. I think they've already made the comments that they are going to do traffic study through, probably just C-DOT, ingress egress situations. I think they'll be more than happy to answer the questions that you have. Now again, whether all questions will always be answered with the question, with the answer that you want, I'm not going to always tell you that it's going to be, but at least having the answer so that you know what's going on, what kind of community it's going to be, and I don't know exactly, I think, you know, he alluded to the types of communities, but I guess until the studies are done, you will have more of a picture once some of the studies are done as to what will, what will be allowed to be accommodated. I mean, if DHEC, I mean, if DOT would, DOT were to tell them X number of cars, I don't know all the planning process, but I know there is a procedural process that happens on their end, that they've got to do their due diligence to the impact on the community. I know we had talked about today about the runoff and stuff like that. I mean, those kind of things, DHEC mandates extremely heavily, so I mean, talking about major fines if that stuff were to even think about occurring, it's better to prevent it than to allow it to happen. So, anyway, I do appreciate y'all coming out, voicing your concerns. That's what these meetings are all about. You know, again, whether you always get the right answer you want or whatever, I can't always say that that will be what happens. Trust me. And again, as far as being able to project the future, that's something none of us can do. So, like I say, with the crime rate, now, I don't know that anybody can ever address that particular question, but typically speaking, on that type of house, at that price point, you don't generally have a whole lot of crime, but that's...
And it's also a starter home. And it's also a starter home, right? It's kind of a first-family starter home.
It could be. I mean, so there's questions to be answered, I understand. So, uh, I think we can definitely schedule a meeting where the company and their plans can be revealed. Maybe, I don't know, we'll try to get it set up. Um, probably have it here at the courthouse annex, depending on the size of the crowd, we may have to move it because we are trying to, as you can tell with this COVID, me trying to lick my fingers, trying to, while we're going to turn the page, um, it's, we're trying to, you know, adhere to COVID regulations so we don't want to put anybody in harm's way to try to answer your questions. But I will say tonight, me personally, I'm going to vote in support of it because I think to shut it down on first reading would be very, uh, I just don't think the due diligence can be done. I think we need to all know what's going on before we do it. So, uh, I, I'll be voting for it tonight and then getting more details later on.
Well, I respect your honesty, this is my fair. If we can't, I don't, so we have to vote, we can't put it on hold till the community can get together and we have enough time to get us together so we know and share and get answers and work with these builders? And it goes through the first time now, is it ever going to stop? It's going to get slammed down our throats, my goodness.
Well, they've, they've got to do their due diligence studies, uh, so they can't just do it immediately. There's no way it can be done two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, six weeks down the, I mean, it's, it's going to be a phase. Am I right, Mr. Satterfield?
Yeah, do we have a timeline?
We're limited to the fact that some of the questions that you want, I don't know that I have the answers to because the amount of money, I'll be honest with you, did I dump into this thing not knowing that whether the freeze zone or not? I have to balance that, if, if you will. So, you know, that's why in terms of product, I try to speak in a broad range, uh, because that's where we're at today. Uh, traffic studies and the things that I mentioned are the things that I know we have to do if a project goes fall. Um, so I would be glad to, you know, this thing goes through tonight, we go into second reading in between, I would say we could bring to, we could bring to the table everything that we have to date or to that, to that particular date and be glad to share with you what our, what our thoughts are. Oh, I mean, that's, that's all I can-
And I respect that and I thank you for that.
But I'm limited somewhat to some places that you mentioned that I, I don't have the ability to answer based on where we are in the due diligence of, of the project, uh, like right now.
And that's what scares me, if we don't get our questions answered and the community's not good and it gets approved the first time and we don't have the answers till after the third reading and it's already done, we've all been screwed. I just spent twenty years building a home, my daughter was about to be there two months at her home, where we're raising our family and we, everybody takes care of everybody out there, we all know each other. And it's going to be too late, so I just am trying to get it slowed down enough that we can get some answers.
Okay, all right, thank you for your time tonight, appreciate you coming. Yes, Mr. Stockman?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, uh, Ms. Peters, do you have anything that you could add to what was said tonight? As far as plans and, I mean, is there any plans as to how it's going to be developed or anything?
No, right now we're only, I've seen a, a very hand-borne sketch plan of, and we haven't even presented to any of you the plan, um, because if it doesn't make it through the zoning, then it's not even going to, so that plan isn't going to work there. And that's quickly in our, it's in the zone district for, they're proposed plans to work. So it needs to go through this re-zoning. If it does, then we go to the planning stages, get plan, formal plan with all the, uh, sand water and new law and all that necessary for that part of the process.
And I totally understand, uh, what you're saying.
Right now, I don't really have any knowledge except for, uh, uh, access up from Jolly Street Road, that's about all I know right now.
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I agree with the people who have come in tonight. Uh, I, I, I just feel like we need to postpone this until we can get the information we need to make the right decision. And as far as I'm concerned, we don't have that tonight. So, uh, you know, I would, I would ask that we delay this until we get enough information to make a good decision.
I'm sorry, Mr., uh, you, uh, uh, interrupted you. Have we heard from all the speakers?
Uh, everybody's signed up yesterday, therefore.
Oh, there's somebody back there.
I'd like to ask, has there been a study on the watershed from this project?
Has there, Mr. Satterfield? Probably not at this point. Yes, sir. If you, what's your name and address?
My name is B.J. Shepard, I live downhill from this, this, that, that.
Okay, and your address?
Twelve zero eight Boynest Road.
Okay, all right. All right, with that being said, uh, we've got the information. What, uh, do we have a motion to be the first reading? What's, what's, which is the counter, but Ms. King, you want to say something?
Yes, if we, if we don't give this first reading tonight, my, my question is going to be, it will die. For a certain period of time, is that not right?
I don't know, Mr. Coon, that it would die because you haven't said no, but she does make the postponement. If council decides not to approve, then they would have to wait a year to reapply for a rezone.
Okay, so if we, if we don't approve the, the first reading, it'll take a year before we could, before somebody could come back and-
If there's a motion made for first reading, seconded, and it fails, then they have to wait a year. Unless, I don't want to get too involved in robbing, but the council will have the option of changing that at the next council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not really saying to, uh, vote to fail the project. All I'm saying is postponing first reading until we get the information we need to make a, what I consider, uh, consider an intelligent decision.
Uh, you want, you, Mr. Stockman, you wanting to wait until we find out what, what something like-
I want to see some plans.
Water runoff would be, what, what, what kind of a strain it may put on the water and sewer, uh, facilities out there? I know we have a, uh, waste treatment plant on Boynest Road. And I know you've had odor problems in the past, I understand that. I don't think I've had any complaints in quite some time. And, uh, of course, there are other utilities involved. And you wanting to, want a study on this, uh, before any decisions are made? Is that, is that what you're trying to tell us?
That's exactly.
Mr. Chairman, if we had first reading, there's nothing to say that this has to be second reading at the next meeting and third reading at the next meeting for conclusion, right?
Yes.
Then we could pass it as first reading to get the process going. And then there's time in between that the council could be working with everybody-
Correct.
-to have it moving. So I would move for first reading.
Okay, a motion for first reading, second, second, all right, discussion? All right, in discussion, I, I feel like that's probably the best thing. It does not mean we've got to move forward next week, next month. I mean, we've got time to do what we need to do. I don't even think the company is going to want to waste money until they got a little bit of knowledge of whether there's support or non-support. I mean, but there's more risk with no vote than there is with the vote. And then we can, we can set up a meeting, and again, how many people are here regarding this? Okay, so we got maybe ten?
Yeah, we just found out.
Yeah, well, we're just saying, we got ten or fifteen people here. If there are more people that want questions answered, you know, I, I, I think the process would be best that we give everybody an opportunity, as many people, I mean, y'all saying you haven't been notified. I don't know what the notification, I know it has been before the zoning already. Um, and again, it's not something that's trying to be done behind your backs. It's not something that's trying to be ramrodded down your throat. Um, I have seen a good many of their, uh, homes built. I will say they are much, much nicer than some that I've seen. So I, uh, I, I think the quality of the home is, is great, but I understand what y'all are saying as far as potential number, potential runoff. But those due diligence studies will all be completed and, and done before the project ever starts. Again, DHEC is going to regulate very strongly any runoff, but at least just, just gets the start of the process going forward. And then we will try to schedule a meeting for the, for the citizens of that area to discuss their concerns is, uh, kind of what we will do at this point, okay? All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second, we got any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's, uh, uh, let's see, uh, Stockman is opposed, everybody else is in favor? Okay. All right, executive session, we don't need one, public comments, I don't think there's anybody that, uh, wasn't addressed on here. Uh, comments, requests from the county administrator, our administrator is actually on vacation, so, uh, we have no comments from him. Council comments, Mr. Scurry?
Thank you for coming out and we're not shoving nothing down your throat. I want everybody to get a fat chance to tell their story, or your story, then we'll decide. So, this coffee passed tonight, it don't mean go fall. You're not telling him that, you're not telling you that, we're telling you, we're all going to sit down and talk about this when anything go fall. And get a clear pitch and dig a clear pitch before they invest their money and we all know what's going on. I don't know what's going on. I'm afraid, well, I don't know and I'm not going to say it going to go fall, but I'm not all for it at this point now because I don't know nothing about it. But I want him to do his study and come back to us. Thank you so much, council.
All right, Dr. Rucker?
We do appreciate all of you being here, uh, the builder, um, and, and the community. And please know that you can always come to County Council meetings. And if you want to speak to us on any, uh, issue, just sign the, the sheet and we'll welcome you. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Reader?
Just want to make sure everyone, take care of yourself. I'm truly concerned, still concerned with this COVID issue. Uh, I want to make sure everyone takes care of themselves. I know we have a lot of people with underlying issues and, and this COVID thing, they said it's going to start, the numbers are going to start going up again. So everybody, please take care of yourself.
Mr. King is not here tonight, Mr. Stockman?
I have no comment.
All right, Mr. Coon?
I spoke to several of you, I don't know if all of you are here today, but I did speak to, uh, this, uh, founder, the D heart, and Mr. Amanda Moss and this, Mr. Andrew Bozeroff. He's, I think he had to work tonight, so he couldn't be here, but he, he does plan to come and, and, and be with y'all during the process. I'd also, uh, like to say that, uh, last night my family lost, uh, one of, one of the most loving women that I've ever known. My Aunt Margaret Coon. I know you're all familiar with C R Coon Highway. Our chief magistrate, Barry Coon's mother. I'd like for you to say a prayer for Barry and all of the Coon family. I lost my mother when I was twelve years old. And I had some women in my life that filled a big hole in my heart. And my Aunt Margaret Coon was one of those women. Please pray for my family, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney, again, we're sorry to hear that. I'd heard, heard it this morning, uh, again. Every time I get a call that shows up Newberry Observatory anymore, I'm like, okay, who's passed? It, it seems like, uh, Dave Waldrop, then Senator Lander, I think you've called me about on him. Uh, again, this lady is, is a lady that her family has been in, involved in this county and the development for quite some number of years. Um, we had Mr. Earl Beatonball, who was another guy, who was a very good guy, who led the Republican Party back in the days when it wasn't near as strong as it is today. Um, it, it's, it's sad to see those who have treasured on before us. In fact, Dave Waldrop, actually was on this county council many years ago. Um, it, it is just, I tell my wife sometimes anymore, you go to church and you sit in church and you used to look around and see all the old people, now you look around and you say, hm, I am one of the old people. So, uh, it, it's getting more and more, uh, I don't know, it, it is sad to see those great, great leaders that have, have left our community, so yes, we do truly understand. Um, as far as y'all coming out, I really appreciate y'all coming out. Mr. Satterfield, great southern, uh, I appreciate y'all being interested in investing in Newberry County. We're proud of our county and we feel we got a lot to offer. So, I mean, I'm glad y'all see that we do have a lot to offer. So, I think you actually live on New Hope Road, if I'm not bad wrong, uh, there in Primaria area. So, um, anyway, um, we appreciate your interest in, in Newberry County. Now, who was that said you need some more property he might want? He, he, he might like that better than what he might buy cheaper, so you might better hook up with him after a while, it might be a better price. Better price, better location. So, anyway, just saying that a little on the lighter side. I do feel like we can all come to terms with this. I do think y'all deserve the right to hear what the plans are. Uh, I do feel like he deserves the right to share the quality of what he has to offer. Uh, so anyway, with all that being said, we appreciate everybody coming together to at least participate. We're going to have more participation opportunities regarding this. Uh, when Wayne gets back, I'll get him to try to get with everybody and schedule it. Uh, we'll, we'll, we've got some obviously contact people that spoke tonight that we can contact to help get the word out in the community. Um, and we can give you plenty of time to prep so that you have what you need to bring to the table, so there won't be any major surprises. Uh, again, now you, you're asking us to go out a little bit on a limb when you say crime rate and all that kind of stuff. I, I don't know, we can never predict that, whether- yeah, tonight or otherwise. But, uh, anyway, again, your, your questions have been heard, we greatly appreciate you. Um, future meetings, we got the Personnel and Intergovernmental Relations Meeting on November ninth. We got the next county council meeting on November the eighteenth. And the Finance Committee meeting will meet on November twenty-third. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?